Advance of the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy is also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. So I'll pause and ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We recognize the quorum of our board. We have six members present, and our seventh member Nancy Justman has a work conflict, but she plans to join us shortly as soon as that is over. So we expect to see her in a bit. But in the meantime, as we have a quorum, we will continue on. And our next agenda item is approval of this agenda, which was posted in advance. I would move to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. And we're going to start with some recognitions tonight. And our first recognition is for the Trail Sharks. And I believe Erin Felber, the athletic director of West Bend West, is going to present this to us. Good evening.
Good evening. I have the honor of overseeing the co-ops. So I will introduce the Trail Sharks. We have Coach Rob Willmuss here. But first off, I want to congratulate all of our Trail Sharks from our mountain biking team in case some of you who don't know what Trail Sharks means, and then also our cross-country runners. So let's get Rob Willmuss up here to talk about the Trail Sharks.
I'm absolutely not coming up here by myself. So this was, this would be, for those of you that aren't super familiar with the Trail Sharks, which actually I think most of you are now. We're a group that started about 10 years ago. It's called, we're a program through the National Interst Classics Cycling Association. They've got 30 state chapters, 30, 32 state chapters now within the nation. And so there's 32 states around the nation that have taken on NICA as a mountain bike program for middle school and high school athletes. So this year, we held our, actually John Donaldson is actually one of our coaches as well, if you don't know that. So this year, three weeks ago, three, three weeks ago, we had our state championship race. So we're a little bit different than other high school sports. We actually continue points throughout the course of the series, throughout the course of the seasons. We've got five races. And at each race, depending on the placement, our athletes get a certain amount of points. And then they're culminated at the end of the year, or at the end of the season, at the state championship. And so everybody kind of qualifies for state. That kind of makes sense. But then our top five or top four athletes this year with their, with the top points, if you were to put a strictly varsity team together to race at the events, would have been my son Quentin and Lexi Schubert. So they've both been on the team. Quentin's been on the team for seven years since he was in sixth grade. And Lexi's been on the team for the same, I believe, maybe six, five years. So they're both seniors, so they're both going to be leaving this year. And then Ayla is a sophomore this year. Last year, she raced in the freshman division. And this year, we're not exactly sure what water she has over at her house and the food her parents are feeding her. But we're going to send the whole team over on that side because the way she grew this year, she went from being one of our good riders to being one of our great riders this year. So it's been fantastic watching all of them grow as athletes over the last few years. And we're also missing Anya Lancer, who finished, I know, third overall for the season.
Where was your state race?
Trek in Waterloo. So up until five or six years ago, nobody was allowed to ride on trek trails except for trek employees. And they started opening it up to our NICA athletes. And now they actually opened it up for a couple of races every year. So it's been absolutely fantastic. As a team, we've grown from six athletes to we're hovering right around 50 athletes. There are other teams out there that don't ever want to get this big, but there's other teams out there that are hovering around 100 to 150 athletes. It's a huge sport. It's one of the fastest, it's the fastest running sport in the state of Wisconsin.
Great.
Great.
Congratulations. All right, we also have a recognition for West Bend West Boys Cross Country.
All right, back up here to recognize our two boy cross-country runners, Ethan and Nathan, and Coach Scott Hammer will talk to you about them.
Thank you, Erin. Evie. Well, on behalf of the Boys Cross Country Team, I would like to thank the school board for inviting us here today to recognize Nathan Butters and Ethan Hackman. Qualifying for the state cross-country meet is no easy feat. To do so, either you have to finish in the top two teams at the sectional race, or you have to be one of the top five individual place finishers not associated with one of the two qualifying teams. So Nathan and Ethan both punched their ticket to the state meet by being one of those individual qualifiers. Ethan finished fourth place overall at sectionals, and Nathan finished 10th place overall. For Nathan, this is his third state meet appearance, something that very few cross-country athletes can say. For Ethan, even fewer athletes can claim that they qualified as an individual their freshman year. In addition to qualifying for state, both of these athletes earned all-conference honors. Nathan earned academic all-state honors. And both athletes added their names to a long list of West cross-country records. Nathan was the 37th fastest 5K time by a senior at West. Ethan was the third fastest 5K time by a freshman at West. So please join me in congratulating both Nathan Butters and Ethan Hackman.
Congratulations. And then we also have West Bend East Girls Cross Country.
Good evening, thanks for having us. On the east side, we are celebrating a special young lady in our girls' cross-country, on our girls' cross-country team, who reached a pretty significant milestone. And I'm going to call up my assistant coach, Cara Moran. My head coach, Rob Sanborn, is ill this evening, so she is pinch hitting.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. This is just great to recognize the athletes. So this small high schooler that you see in front of you, who actually hates being the center of attention, is a resilient powerhouse. She joined our team last year as a freshman and wasn't sure what she thought about running because soccer is her favorite sport. But she worked hard and finished in the middle of our JV pack. She came back this year confident, cheerful, and ready to roll. And she surprised our team by finishing third overall on our time trial, the first race of the season, with a time that was five minutes faster than her first race last season. Through no fault of her own or of her wonderful parents, Sarah lives life dealing with some hard issues every day. These hard things, though, have made her very resilient and very tough mentally. She often comes to practice and says, "My day didn't go well, but that's all right. I'll be fine." And she was fine. She finished six of our races second on varsity and two of them first on varsity. She has a very unique ability to stay calm in her races. She goes out kind of controlled in her first mile and then spends the next two miles passing people. She consistently reached her goals by working hard, thinking positively, and staying calm. Before the sectional race, Coach Sanborn, who is great at data, looked at the stats of all the other girls and showed Sarah that basically if she ran her brains out, she would have a shot to make it, to earn that fifth spot for the state meet. The possibility was there, but it would require an extraordinary race by Sarah. So she started her race, as always, calmly. And after the first mile, she was in 26th place needing to get to 15th. And that's what she did. She worked her way forward, passing 11 girls and earning the fifth spot for the state meet. Sarah's time for her first cross-country race freshman year was over 30 minutes. She cut more than 10 minutes off that this year and finished this season in the 20s. She holds the second fastest 5K time for East sophomore girls. So far, the seventh fastest overall for East girls. She earned third team All North Shore Conference at the conference meet. And she is the first sophomore girl from East to make it to state in over 22 years.
Wow, congratulations. Well, congratulations to everyone here. And that goes not only for the athletes, but the coaches, parents. We appreciate you coming here tonight because I can imagine there are more exciting things to do than come to a school board meeting on a Monday night. But it gave us as a board a chance to recognize your hard work. And also, it helps us stay connected to what's going on in the schools. And this is, this is exciting stuff, so thank you very much. I'm going to invite one of your colleagues to come forward to give the student update. And then everyone's going to have a chance, if they would like to, to leave, unless you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting. But I'm going to introduce McKenna Orth from East, who's going to come forward. And McKenna is one of our student reporters. And she's kind of pinch hitting and doing double duty tonight for East and West. You're a senior, is that right?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore, I'm sorry. I knew it began with an S, sophomore.
Thank you for having me.
Welcome, yes, absolutely. We're excited to hear your update.
So within the first quarter of the 2022-2023 school year, we've had many achievements, starting off with the West Bend chess team. The chess team competed in a Lake Country Academy tournament where the team brought home the first-place trophy. And Aaron Ruplinger won the third-place individual trophy. Adding on to that, last week, students in Mrs. Noonan's biomedical innovations class presented their redesigned mission projects to the West Bend Fire Department and staffs of the Cedar community. One group presented measures that could be added to an ambulance for calming patients to be transported. Another group presented an idea for a recharging station for the nurses and staff to be able to recharge, regroup, and de-stress, which are all amazing ideas. Manufacturing Today magazine featured the West Bend High School's manufacturing programs in its Fall 2022 issue. This magazine featured the broad field of manufacturing, school-based manufacturing programs, and industry partnerships with schools. This article explains the range of classes available at East and West students, including those that offer transcripted credits. It also described the clubs that they can get involved in while in high school and even compete at state or national levels in various manufacturing and other skills. Check out the East and West high school manufacturing classes on page seven. With that, the West Bend High School Drama Club Fall Play rehearsals are in full swing. The play, which is How to Host a Murder Mystery Dinner Party in 15 Steps, will be held this weekend, Friday, the 18th at 7:00 p.m., the 19th, 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, the 20th at 2:00 p.m. Tickets can be purchased in the West Bend Bank 59, Porcon Bank, the high school bookkeeper's office, and online. In addition to the state recognition for cross-country and Trail Sharks, the swim and dive team had two athletes perform at the state competition this weekend, Maddie Rumel and Nikki Walters. Along with that, the West Bend East football team made it to Level Three of the playoffs, which was the second time in East football history. Finally, the date of the Student Council blood drive is Wednesday, December 7th, held at the high school, where there are slots available from 6:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Community members are welcome to sign up through varsity.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation, yes. Nice job. We look forward to seeing you in future meetings as well. All right. So thank you, thank you to all the students and everyone else who came. We are going to continue on with our board business, but I always give an opportunity to pause at this point in time because if anyone wishes to leave, you can do so at any time, including now. Otherwise, what we'll do is we'll move on to our, to our next step. But we'll just pause to give you folks a chance to gather your things, whoever wants to leave. Thank you again for coming. And while these folks are exiting, our next agenda item will be public participation. I've not received any public participation comment cards, so I'm looking around the room to see if there are any. Not seeing anyone come forward with that. All right. All right, as we have no participants for public participation, move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have a number of items. Minutes of the October 24th, 2022 regular board meeting. One contract for approval. We have no resignations. One retirement with several safety reports, and our list of disbursements posted to November 5, 2022. I believe that is all. I would move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We move to our action items. And our first item is student out-of-state travel for German. I believe we've seen this item as a preview before. But Dr. Jill Reese, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will walk us through this item. Good evening.
Good evening. So Cory Petzel, last time, answered questions about the state, well, out-of-state to Illinois, trip to German for the Kriskindl Market. And so we're just seeking approval on that tonight. I don't know if there's any questions on it, but it's pretty straightforward. It's a day trip, and he will receive permission from parents. He had about 100 students that were interested in going at the time, so that's what he's looking at. So we're just seeking approval on that.
Any changes to the proposal that we saw last time?
None from what we presented.
Yeah. I've been to this event, and it's a fantastic event. Think this is, it's a great, it's a great experience.
It's a really nice opportunity for the students.
Yeah, they will encounter some, they will encounter several native German speakers there, no doubt. They'll enjoy it.
That will challenge their language skills, I hope, yes.
Any questions on this item?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
To Tani, motion and second to approve the student out-of-state travel for German as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to reports. And our first report is the Policy Committee Report. And Mr. Joel Angert serves as our Policy Committee Chair. If you wouldn't mind giving the report.
You bet. Last week, on November 10th, a policy committee met in this room, and we talked about the 300-series policies, which center around instruction. We had started that series a month or two ago and finished, at least we finished our part of that series last week. And I say that because some of the policies kind of sort of get kicked back to the curriculum committee. Some of them, we kick back to the administration for some different wording or maybe some different options. And so I think in the coming, in the next coming board meetings, we'll see some of those come for approval. And then through policy or curriculum, there could be still some tweaking done before they come back to the board for approval. But we're moving right along with those. Our next series is the 400-series policies, which center around what?
Student services.
Student services, thank you, forgot. So that will be our next batch that we tackle. The superintendent sent an email out to John and Chris and myself this afternoon. I've got dates. It looks like you two have already selected some dates that work. So we'll get as many of those dates on the calendar as we can here in, it looks like, December and January to start tackling the 400-series.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Joel? Appreciate the update.
You bet.
Right, we, I believe we're going to invite Dr. Reese back to the podium to discuss STAR district data. Oh, actually, someone else.
Christina Van Rue for you.
That's all right. Christina Van Rue, good.
Hi.
Hello.
I'll be here instead of Dr. Reese today.
Oh, that's all right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my notes were misinformed me, so.
No worries. So Tina. Helped me out during our curriculum committee in October because I wasn't able to attend, so I'm.
Oh, that could be the carryover. So Tina Van Rue, reminder is our district assessment coordinator, guru of all data and presentations around our metrics, whether they're internal, external, et cetera, to help inform continuous improvement, school improvement plan. So I know you've prepared this in advance for the curriculum committee and then bringing it forward to the whole board tonight. So thank you, Tina.
Yeah, you're welcome. So we're just going to go through this presentation comparing some historical data compared to this year's data using STAR, which is our universal screener for students in grades kindergarten through 10th grade. So first off, we screen for a variety of reasons. The first point being that STAR is nationally normed. So with that, we can see how students are doing at a point in time compared to their grade-level peers around the nation. We also can use the information and scores so that each individual student can be responsive to their needs. Furthermore, if kids have any legging skills, STAR is one of those measures that can help us identify a certain area that might be holding them back so that we can intervene through academic interventions to help build up those skills so they can achieve their best. Lastly, we give the STAR assessment three times a year, once in fall, winter, and in spring. So with doing it multiple times per year, we're also able to get information on how our students are growing over time. So as you can see on the slide, there are three different main assessments that we give to our students for STAR. And there's a couple additional math assessments. So for students in grades kindergarten first, they take the STAR Early Literacy Test, which is the pre-reading assessment. Then in grades two through 10, they take the STAR Reading. And then students in grades one through eight take STAR Math. Additionally, beginning last year, our students in ninth and 10th grade were able to take STAR Algebra or STAR Geometry, which would align to the courses that they take at the high school. The next few slides, we're going to walk through each assessment that was listed and talk about how our kids demonstrated their proficiency last fall compared to this fall. Since STAR is a nationally-normed assessment, one of the scores that we get from them is a national percentile rank. That score places a kid somewhere on a 1 to 99 scale. We take that 1 to 99 scale and break it into four different ranges of proficiency. When students reach a proficiency level of three or four, they're benchmarked and considered to be proficient at that grade on that test at that time. So what you're looking at in percentages is the amount of students that were meeting those nationally-normed grade-level benchmarks. Furthermore, on these slides, along with the percentage of proficiency, you'll also see that our test participation rate last year was 96% for our K and first graders, and this year 97. So the more participants, the better valid the results are. This next slide breaks down the overall K and 1 into how each grade performed. You can look at these table slides in two ways. If you look at just the row of grade of kindergarten, you can see how our kindergarteners did last fall to this fall. You can also look at the table diagonally to see how our kindergarteners did last fall compared to how they are doing this year as first graders in fall. Next is STAR Reading, which again is given to our students in grades two through 10. Again, our test participation was pretty high for each of the assessments. Our goal always being aligned to what the state is looking for, which is 95% participation or higher. Sometimes, sometimes it's a combination of things. It could be absences, alternate schedules. Sometimes we still have a hard time getting some of our virtual students to participate as well. We do have the assessments windows open so that they can access the test from their home, you know, internet providers and stuff. But we do have a little trouble still getting that full participation.
I just wanted to add something else to. I think is some of the percentage that doesn't take it, would that be like a special needs student that maybe is unable to take it?
Yeah, so we do have a small population of students who take alternate assessments, even at the state lens, but that's about 1% of our total district. So while that would be a factor here, it wouldn't contribute to the entire 5% per grade. So this information is broken down by each grade level. So similarly, you could look at it row by row to see how each grade did last year compared to this year. Or you could loosely follow a cohort of students diagonally, looking at last fall to this fall. Moving on to STAR Math. STAR Math is administered in grades one through eight. Last fall to this fall, again, great test participation. And then further breaking it down by each grade level. Last year, for the first time, we did try a new administration of giving Algebra or Geometry to our ninth and 10th grade students. There were still a select few students who took the general STAR Math test. On the next slide, based off of the feedback from the curriculum committee, we did add some participation numbers. However, we didn't add in specific numbers about the STAR Math. There's less than 30 students per grade that take it as driven by their IEP or 504 needs, so we didn't want to drill too far down into their privacy. I apologize. I think the curriculum committee one is what was posted. So I did have numbers available in the participation. So I'm just going to back up a slide, and I'll just talk through them. So for STAR Algebra last year, so the fall of 21-22, the majority of our ninth graders did participate, and that was 330. And then for 10th grade, we did have 61 students take the Algebra. This year, for STAR Algebra, again, the majority of ninth graders, 374 participated, while we had 55 10th graders participate. Looking at Geometry, we had 62 ninth graders participate last year and 243 participate. So the vast majority were taking that geometry at 10th grade. And then this year, we had 79 ninth graders participate in geometry and 304 10th graders participate. This chart further breaks down by grade level, the percent proficient last year to this year amongst one of the three STAR Math exams that they took. Keep in mind that the STAR Math with the asterisk has very low student participation.
I have a question. So unlike the, unlike the previous charts where we're tracking a class as they take math throughout the years, we can't really compare ninth grade geometry fall 21-22 with 10th grade geometry fall 22-23 because that's not the same class because you only need to take geometry one time, I assume, right?
Correct. At minimum, you could look at ninth grade algebra from last year, at 25%. And loosely, that cohort of students would be taking 10th grade geometry. You can't compare the percentages because it's two different assessments, but that would be the one cohort you could use to look at this test.
Do you think these assessments are actually accurate, you know, and show what the students actually know? I mean, I know there's, these aren't really part of the grade.
Correct.
They're just an assessment to see where the students, I mean, because, you know, across the board, 60% or more are not proficient according to this.
Yeah, so I do think that the results we get from the STAR exam are valid. We actually have our benchmarking set to closely align with the Wisconsin Forward exam as well. So as the kiddos take this test multiple times per year, we can use it as a predictor of how the state is going to measure students' performance too. But like anything, this is just one measure. When we, it's actually a great segue to my last slide. But when we use this data, we use it in multiple ways. And it's never used in isolation because there's other things that kids can do to show their knowledge and perform academically towards their standards.
For the basics, math reading and writing? I mean, because that's what these are, right? We don't, obviously, we're not, there's no science assessment or anything like that in here.
Correct.
So I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'm just looking at it the way I see it as, you know, the basic groups of study that we have in our schools where more, you know, more students are failing or not proficient, which, you know, this looks like a failing grade for the district to me.
There's definitely room to grow. There's, there's no way to kind of hide that. It is typical that when we assess students in the fall, that is kind of our baseline, that's our starting point. And as we reassess in winter and then come to our, our spring and summative state assessments, we do see growth. But this information is very aligned with what we see when we're measuring similar ELA and math skills on state assessments. Very closely aligned.
Would you say that?
Would you say that, okay, so you're, you're testing proficiency in geometry, for example, in the fall? Is that proficiency of where they should know geometry, considering they've only just started learning geometry? Or compared with, okay, by the time you're done with this class at the end of the school year, you're going to have a full amount of knowledge of geometry?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So the norms that are benchmarked nationally are based on each window. So they are being measured against other students taking the same assessment at that same grade level in fall. Then in winter, they're going to be measured against other winter results too, and then finally, spring. STAR gives a lot of other information too. That is, it's called criterion referenced, and it aligns to how students are doing towards mastering standards. So while we can look at this nationally-normed info for proficiency and benchmarking, the teachers can actually get itemized information, how they're doing on achieving different standards. There's, there's more info to come. This is just the largest screening picture.
And I think when you talk about the importance of screening, that's kind of a precursor to, to John's point, you know, this isn't where our district ends. This is a preliminary measure of where kids are coming in at and how we kind of grow them. It gives detailed individualized reports for families. I think that's most meaningful for an individual student or family. And then these are just bigger buckets of data to help us look at and make program information, or looking at kind of high-leverage, high-yield strategies that are going to increase student performance. So, so to your point, like you said, like, all right, so once we get preliminary measures, then what's that whole profile of data that we're looking at? And then where do we grow that and look at those, those benchmarks? I know that through the leadership of the curriculum committee, they are analyzing their cycles, their metrics for benchmarks, and then we've been putting together kind of what that dashboard looks like, to your point, so that we can show what is our consistent growth as a district and what's that expectation from teachers in the classroom level for their students, all the way to the board and community expectation too.
How many times do we administer the STAR test?
Yeah, so we're currently in our sixth year of using this as our universal screener, and then it's given three times per year.
Three times a year.
So we did it the beginning of September. The winter window will be the first two weeks of December, and then the spring window will be the first two to three-ish weeks of May.
Can you go back one slide for me? Kind of building on what Tani was talking about, just if you take a look at the ninth grade geometry numbers, I'd be willing to bet that we do maybe even just a small section of geometry in seventh and eighth grade. And then when they, these ninth graders are taking this test, they're doing fairly well in geometry. You mentioned that there's 55, and I don't know if that's true or not, I'm just, like I said, willing to bet. But you mentioned 55 10th graders took the algebra portion of this test and are showing 1% proficiency. Are they, are those 55 kids in an algebra cla-, in, in algebra right now? So we're obviously hoping in the next STAR exam, that goes way up as they learn algebra, correct?
Yeah. The, the typical course path, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the typical course path for math in high school is ninth grade algebra, sophomore year geometry. So if we have those 55 kids that are 10th graders in algebra, it's either likely that it was missed in a previous district, maybe they weren't successful their first time around taking algebra, so this is a retake now. So that's why the numbers are, are smaller for that group of participants.
It's always hard to see these numbers in the fall, because like John said, these are, these numbers are not great. And we always, you know, it, it's a building block and hope that these numbers go up in the winter and then again in the spring. And, you know, speaking of the German trip, if I were to take a German test, I'd be 0% proficient right now, but maybe after four months in German class, it's, that number goes up, and after eight months in German class, it's proficient maybe, but these, I, my personal opinion here, these, these numbers are hard to see when they're, when we're only showing 10%, 8% proficiency and, and, you know, again, I hope it's a building block to better results in the winter and in the spring.
Agreed. So kind of circling back to why we give the STAR, now that we have results, they are used in multiple ways and they're used in multiple ways throughout the year. From the highest level, we use this as one metric when we do our dips and sips, our district and school improvement plans. It's, since it's so closely aligned to how we perform on state assessments, it gives us that touch base three times a year on how we think the kids are going to do. Then at the end of the year, the district plan and the school improvement plans are going to most likely use the state assessments to really measure how they did one year to the next, to show that growth. Teachers and principals can tuck PLCs in their schools regularly. That was a big initiative to get everyone kind of normed back to that practice this year. So a professional learning community that's focused on student data. You know, they're not just meaning to talk about field trips and fun events, but they're always coming together on a regular basis to talk about how the kids are doing in their classroom, what else we can try, are they being, are we seeing growth, et cetera. So that's a regular cycle in place at every school this year.
And one connection for people not familiar with educator effectiveness and the evaluation system, you know, teachers focus on their own professional growth, but then they also go through, uh, goal-setting, and they identify, maybe it's their whole class working on one skill or a small subset based on some data, and work to disrupt and get them accelerated for their learning. And then they'll do a fall goal on that, they'll do check-ins with their administrator mid-year on that small group. So it's also part of their own professional practice, and then really identifying in their evaluation, working on behalf of a, a small group or a group of students as well. So there's connections to the evaluation system there as well.
Furthermore, sometimes students just need some academic intervention, because they may have a skill or some skills that are, are roadblocks for them to be able to show everyone what they can really do. So the STAR data, being nationally-normed, help us give qualifying information for students that can receive additional services, tiered interventions. And then lastly, giving it multiple times per year, and I've mentioned this a few times, but we really want to see how students are growing. There's two ways in which STAR can show us that they're growing, but the one that we use mostly for the district with an expectation is a student growth percentile. So after they take two assessments, we'd be able to have a new data point to show how the students not only are growing at their grade-level expectations, but also how they're growing compared to their academic peers. So that information will be available after the winter window is finished with the screening.
And just to make a connection, recall that as each school comes forward and presents their plans, and they'll do that multiple times, you've been seeing schools present kind of their fall, they're talking about growth in two ways, right? Here's where that benchmark is, and we expect kids to hit that grade-level benchmark. And then we're also looking, as Tina's talking about, growth goals. So it's, it's two ways to ensure that every child's growing, because what if we had a student who came into that grade and already knew those pieces, and we need to still take them further? So it's measuring that we've impacted that child's learning, or perhaps a, a child's going to have to work three times as hard to even hit that grade-level benchmark. It's showing, they might be shy, but we're closing that gap on those benchmarks, and you're honoring the accelerated growth that's occurring. So there's a couple ways when you, again, when you think back to the schools and how they present, they'll talk about both of those pieces.
Thanks for answering my question.
Okay.
So from a timing perspective, when, when are these tests administered? We talked about fall, right? So a week ago, a month ago?
So we started the window the second week of school, so the second full week of school, so after Labor Day, because you want to know, like, right away, what can they do when they come? Teachers analyze the reports, they get the data live, so they can analyze the reports the same day, and then they can use that amongst other classroom assessments that they give to start targeting and grouping kids based off of what they need and how they need to go on.
So that's, that's interesting. So just in line with some of the questions that we had before, so, so a student starts school, let's say on day one, and on day 14, let's say, they're taking, they're taking the test. So is the subject matter of the test that they're taking what they would have learned in the first 14 days? Or is it, I mean, because that, that seems a little bit narrow. I mean, it seems like they're asking more.
You're not going to learn German in 14 days.
Well, exactly. That's why, you know, you look at it and think, wow, that's, that, exactly.
Solve this algebraic expression day two, right? No.
Right, exactly. Like algebra, it's, well, we're only testing on the first two weeks? Help me understand that, because I, I've got to be missing something.
So STAR, much like any other system, is a computer-adaptive test. So the first set of questions that the students are going to receive are just on grade level, what they should know at that time of year. Depending on how the students answer it, the questions are either going to increase in difficulty, or they're going to kind of level down and decrease too. So you're going to always get that grade level, how are you doing? But then it's also going to adjust to make them less frustrated during testing and give you new information that can help guide the teacher on either end of the spectrum. What do they need to be challenged, or what do they need to help fill the skills that are lacking?
Okay, that's.
So the test adapts.
Yeah, that's helpful, because when I think of these standardized tests, I think of the Iowa basics that I had in fifth grade with the ovals, and everyone took exactly the same test. Interesting, so it's adaptive.
It is adaptive, yeah. So we can get that grade-level info, but also that standard-based info that's specific to the test taker.
Great. Other questions? I think obviously we'll be very interested in the next batch of tests, let's see what that incremental, what that delta, the growth is, so, thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks for yours. All right. And our next report is seclusion and restraint, and I believe Emily Melstrand, our Director of Student Services, will walk us through that item. Good evening.
Good evening. All right, let me get our presentation up. Okay, so first, I want to thank you for your time tonight. If you recall, I think it was about two months ago, we kind of front-loaded this presentation. We are required by the Department of Public Instruction to do an annual report to the school board and then also to the Department of Public Instruction, representing our seclusion and restraint data for the previous year. So this data is actually representative of the '21-'22 school year. Because we had the opportunity to go through and kind of front-load around seclusion and restraint, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but please ask questions if there's anything that you'd like me to clarify. If you recall, Wisconsin Act 118 provides the statutory framework for school districts that ensures that we are using seclusion and restraint in a way that is appropriate and in alignment with state statute. One of the things that I highlight every time we speak about this is that seclusion and restraint is something that we try to avoid at all costs. It's the last strategy that we would ever use with a student, and it is designed to be used only when a student's behavior presents a clear, present, and imminent risk to the physical safety of that student or to other students. And one of the things that we work very hard in our system to do is to ensure that our staff are adequately trained. So we have a pretty comprehensive training plan where all of the individuals who are most likely to be in a position where they're making a decision about seclusion and/or restraint are certified through a non-cris-, a non-violent crisis management program. And we actually have internal trainers who not only do that annually, but are available and do follow-up with teams in the event that we feel that some additional follow-up might be beneficial to the team. So just from a definition standpoint, if you recall, seclusion is the involuntary confinement of a student in a room or area where the student is physically prevented from leaving. This doesn't mean like a break room. I mean, sometimes kids will just simply need a break, and they may have a space designated in a building where kids are able to go and calm down and, and kind of regroup. That's not necessarily a seclusion. A seclusion is a situation where you're preventing the student from leaving a space because you're concerned about safety. And then a physical restraint is exactly what you would expect it to be. It's where we're having to immobilize or reduce the student's ability to move. And again, that's something that we take really seriously and try to avoid at all costs. So the Wisconsin Act 118 requires us to communicate three different numbers to our school board and to the State of Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. Those include the number of incidents of seclusion and/or restraint, so the total number, the number of students involved in a seclusion or restraint, and then specifically, we need to identify how many of those students are students with disabilities. And you're going to notice in the data that the majority of the students who are involved in any type of seclusion and, and/or restraint are typically students with special education needs. In the event that a, that a seclusion or restraint has occurred, there are very specific protocol in place. Parents are notified the day of the event, either via phone, conference, or email. A report is submitted. I receive that in my office, so I'll receive that report at the end of the day. In addition to that, that report is provided to the parent within three business days of the event. The building administrator and anyone involved in that incident will meet to debrief, make any recommended changes, make modifications to the student's behavior intervention plan if need be. And if the student has an IEP, if two or more incidents have occurred, the IEP team is required to meet, reassess the appropriateness of the behavior intervention plan, and make any necessary changes. So the next two slides really detail the data for the 2021-'22 school year. And one of the things that I do just want to comment on is there's, there have been some updates in terms of guidance in the last couple of years. So there's a couple of pieces of data that historically weren't included in our, our annual report, and those include students who are placed in an alternative placement. And anytime a student is removed from the building by law enforcement, that's also considered a restraint. Not that that has had a significant impact, but I do want you to know that those two data points have been added in the past two years. So these are our district-wide record. And then this is the total number of students involved in one or more incident, all students and students with disabilities. And that is the annual report. Do you have any questions?
Has administration identified any type of unusual trend? I mean, this appears to be, just from memory, somewhat in line with, I think, what this board has seen in the past? Are there any trends that you've noticed that are, that are different, or has it been somewhat par for the course?
You know, it's, it's really hard to compare from year to year, because our student needs are changing, our student population in terms of students with disabilities. But I will say, one of the things that we're actively working on right now is ensuring that through our training protocol, that people are really clearly understanding what constitutes particularly a seclusion. And we've been working with a couple of our teams, they're, they're very diligent, and they want to make sure that they're documenting all of their events very clearly, but sometimes a little unsure about, okay, this, is this a break? Is this a kiddo who just simply needed a quiet space to kind of de-escalate and, and regulate their body? Or is this actually a seclusion? So we've been working really hard around definition and being sure that, that staff members need that. And the other thing I will say, I mean, that's always really important to me and, and the rest of our team, is that we're heavily focusing on the de-escalation strategies. We really want to make sure that we are getting in before behavior escalates and becomes potentially dangerous to a child or to another staff member. So we've been very heavy in terms of our professional development on de-escalation. We actually have a behavior coach this year, who I, I, I think I'm going to bring back to the board in January when we do our next update, who has been fantastic and has been out in the building. She was a special education teacher at Jackson, and actually, I think she got the RULFs Award for Teacher of the Year last year, Amy Carver. She has been phenomenal, where when we start to see any kind of pattern or trend, we're able to deploy Amy, and she's able to really spend a lot of time with individual teachers and teams. And we've gotten some really positive feedback from teachers about the benefit of that support. So I'm not sure if that answers it. Trends in particular, not necessarily, but certainly patterns of response that we've been being pretty thoughtful about.
Well, thank you. Other questions? John?
Do you have this broken down by grade or grade groups?
I don't have it broken but down by grade. We do break it down by building, but I'm really conscientious about bringing that forward, because sometimes the group of, groups of kids involved at different buildings or different grade levels is so small. grade levels is so small that I'm always conscientious of if I put a number up and there's somebody out in the community who can identify a particular student, I want to be conscientious of that. So when I report it to the Department of Public Instruction, it will be delineated by building, but not by grade level.
And building's fine. I mean, you know, I just, you would just assume that as the kids get older, they have a little bit better, you know, way of handling their emotions. So you would, you would hope the number would go down. I was just curious.
You're, and John, you're 100% correct in that suggestion. That's absolutely the case. And we, we have very few seclusions and/or restraints really by the time kids get into Silverbrook, by fifth and sixth grade. When we prioritize training, we're really prioritizing our early learning teachers and our elementary teachers because that is more likely to occur at that level. So absolutely correct. Any other questions? It's a report, there's no action, but please always reach out if you have questions about that.
Any other questions? Thank you for your report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
Thank you. Kind of in the theme of data this evening, a, the embargo will finally be lifted tomorrow. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction will release their accountability report cards. So just a reminder that each school will receive a unique report card. They look at data around demographics, different priority weight areas. So each school actually has unique weighting, as does each district. So it makes it good that it's tailored for a specific school, but it makes it hard to compare apples, oranges, and everything else in between when you receive those. So we'll make sure and update our families. We have a press release ready to go, but we can't release that till tomorrow. Again, we saw they lead with individual results. Students take this kind of last spring. Families would receive individual results, then they allow some school or district results to come forward, and then they compile based on different factors like attendance, socioeconomic status, all different metrics, as well as the state test. Then they combobulate that into a state report card and for that system. So those will be out tomorrow and just another piece of data that we use for our district and our schools with their continuous improvement planning. So look for those. Just a reminder to the board, we have a work session November 22nd here at the ASC starting at 4:00 PM. We've included our first responders from our different areas. We're going to focus that session on safety. We've had some discussions around what to expect, hopeful outcomes for that time together. And just a congratulations to the athletes that you met tonight, those who were finishing their season, like we had swim and dive compete this weekend. And just a shout out to East Football as well. So they also did some historic. So we had West who, who broke their streak finally and, and won some games, but also West was that first East team in 52 years to reach nine wins in a season and make it to this level. So just congratulations to those athletes for their accomplishments and thank you to all the athletes for representing West Bend in such a positive way. We appreciate that. McKenna highlighted a few things, that fall play is going on. If you're interested, check our website, should be a fun one. Check out the ticket office. You can buy tickets online, purchase those. Again, reminder, it's beginning November 18th, runs through the weekend. And those tickets can be purchased. You can go right online, you can call us if you can't find those and we can help you get connected. Also, our student council is very active at the high school. She highlighted the community blood drive. That will be December 7th. So look for that. We'll make sure and publicize that. We're asking not only students who are of age, but staff members, but it'll be open to the community members. They have a goal of 400 pints of blood. That would save more than 1,200 lives. So that is their, their goal. And they have a cute slogan. It's, you know, someone's always your type in that. So the kids came up with their slogan and we'll run that December 7th. So look for that, sign up as well. And also adding to your calendars, the Pops concert. What a unique opportunity. Thank you to Columns. That's our community organization who creates scholarship opportunities for our students here in West Bend. One of their fundraising events is hosting the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Holiday Pops Concert right here on our campus in the Silver Lining Arts Center. So again, if you're interested in tickets, this is the 50th anniversary of that special event. It will be held December 13th and you can get your tickets for $30 each at Horicon Bank, Jeff Spirits on Main, Sendix. Check our website out, we can help you get tickets, but it's a great event. I know Board Member Joel Ongert is part of that group, so he'll, might be doing a call for volunteers for us to help usher the evening of that performance. But just thank you to Columns for helping sponsor that, for what they do for our students when it comes to scholarships and encourage everyone to kick off the holiday season with such a fun event. That's all I have for this evening. If anyone has any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer? Thank you for your report. All right, and our board clerk, Toni Schmidt, will give a report to the community regarding deadlines for filing for board candidacy or non-candidacy for the spring 2023 election. Toni?
An election is to be held in the school district of West Bend on Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. The following offices are to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed. For the Office of School Board, incumbent Nancy Justman. The Office of School Board, incumbent Joel Ongert. The Office of School Board, incumbent Toni Schmidt. The term of office for school board members is three years, beginning on Monday, April 24th, 2023. A description of the school district boundaries can be obtained from the school district office. The deadline for incumbents to file a notice of non-candidacy is December 23rd, 2022 by 5:00 PM. A campaign registration statement and a declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, in the office of the school district clerk at the Education Service Center located at 735 South Main Street, West Bend, Wisconsin 53095. If a primary is necessary, the primary will be held on February 21st, 2023.
So in addition to that official statement from our clerk, we also have a news item going out in our family newsletter. We send something to the newspaper and there's also a page on our website. If anyone is interested in running for board, feel free to connect with me directly. I can answer some questions or I know our board president has often made himself available for anyone who is interested in looking at school board and kind of what that entails. So feel free to reach out as well.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our one and only discussion item tonight, which is the 2023-2024 capital projects. And our Director of Facilities, Dave Ross, is here to walk us through that. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here a little bit early this year. Typically, we would do this in December, January timeframe, but given our experiences last year, we're going to get out ahead of the gate a little bit early. This year's projects are pretty typical, what you would normally see. Budgeted costs do have a contingency built into them. The $1.725 million is actually what was budgeted this year because of the way costs came in this past year. I'm going to keep that 4%, but we typically go up in reserve and if we do all right, then we'll be coming back later on and bringing some more projects forward. Again, as I said, there's, there's nothing that you haven't seen here before. Pretty much run of the mill projects, just to keep the doors open. There are, you know, district programs that we have for the usual roofing repairs, asphalt repairs, concrete repairs. We've got some masonry in there that we do just like, and then we're also going, this year started district wide painting program. We are way behind on painting and it really affects how things look in the building and how, how the classrooms are. So really, there's a couple of items in there that you'll see that are pretty big ticket items. The elevator at the high school, it's really important that we get that taken care of. The control panel on that is 50 years old. It's all mechanical rather than electronic. And the hydraulic cylinder, typically now when a hydraulic cylinder is put in an elevator, it's double walled. This one is single walled. It's not a requirement that it be done, however, if we do have a leak in that hydraulic system, we'll then be faced with the always fun environmental cleanup once we spill hydraulic fluid into the earth. Another item that we really didn't, we had a suspicion that might have to take place would be the balancing and commissioning up at the high school. As you'll recall, we did a couple of overlapping years where we added controls. It's really helped up at the high school in terms of occupant comfort, troubleshooting, and knowing what's going on in the building. However, it did exactly what I suspected was going to happen and it unveiled a whole bunch of other problems. So we have some issues up at the high school with precipitation right now where there's so much pressure within the building that some of the exterior doors don't close readily, which means we're spending a lot of extra energy, creating more, moving more air than we really need to. So to the best of my knowledge, that system has never been balanced since it was originally installed and there've been multiple additions and renovations and it's just, I'm afraid it's time to, to go in there and try to get things back to where they need to be. As I said, this budget is 1.725 million. Typically what happens is you'll see in the comments section that, you know, if a project has been deferred, I make a note in there of when it was deferred from. Next year's not going to, is not looking really pretty, just so you are all aware. Right now, we're still kind of moving things forward and redoing the 25-year facilities plan, but right now we're looking at a $13.4 million capital request for next year. When I project out 10 years, we're looking in the $27 million range. Those numbers are only going to go up as we continue to, to work through all our different programs and documents. For example, the decor assessment that you've all seen before. We're just about through all elementary schools, so there'll be some more stuff added. And as I said, that number is not going to get any smaller. So that's kind of where we are.
Just that context, you know, as we said, we brought forward kind of the sample, all the updates on the facilities. We'll bring that back so you can see that larger context. Dave will have those done. We'll bring that forward and then we'll start talking about strategy around other funds and, and what we could start pulling and taking. But again, just understanding that there were a lot of years where, you know, I liken it to having a credit card balance and we were making the minimum payments. So we really just want everyone to be cognizant of that, that deferred maintenance bucket of things that should have been. Are things falling down around our ears? No. But we want to make sure that people understand that, you know, that's piling up to be 13 million in things that we would consider deferred. You know, he's taking the projects that are priority, anything that was around safety, security, making sure it's in there, anything, again, looking at potential breakdown and system failure on something or things that could cost us more money by not attending to them. So just making sure we have that context. So this is just that one piece of that puzzle. When we come back, probably December, to do that update where we look at everything in context, we'll take a slice of the pie during our work session around some of the safety pieces and then come back and then start talking kind of financial strategies and planning to not only reset so we're not on the hamster wheel of chasing things, what that would be. But again, I think we've been really candid about, you know, that doesn't get you any enhancements, that doesn't build a new Jackson, that doesn't change or shift learning enhancement or take care of furniture replacement, which can start, you know, being a large cycle too and make a dent. We just want to put things in context. So making sure we're seeing, analyzing, and then planning short and long term.
Any questions?
The 1.725 million capital budget is set with our annual meeting and tax levy and things like that. Maybe if Andy wants to come up, this might be more of a finance question. Where are we going to get 13.4 million next year? And I, I, can that be done through a tax levy? Can that be done through, you know, this year we're lowering, lowering our tax rate quite a bit because we've paid off debt. Can you use tax rate to, to fund capital type projects like this for next year?
The, our current transfer, so that is one of the binding amounts in resolution number one at the annual meeting that we had back in September. That always is, that's something per state statute. So whatever the community votes on at that point, that dollar amount in Fund 41 or even for that matter within Fund 46, both of those are within the revenue limit. So the only way really would be to either carve out more dollars out of our general fund to be able to, to put more into Fund 41 dedicated for these projects or a resolution by the board for a referendum, either an operational question or a debt issuance question. So that, that would need to be something either within the current revenue limit or something asking for additional dollars.
Aren't we already taxing to the max as, as the saying goes? So how, how could you do it within an operating?
In, in, through an operating referendum.
So either option as a, as a referendum?
The, the referendum itself can either be an operational component saying, allow the school district to exceed the revenue limit cap, which we are taxing and levying to the maximum allowable authority. Or there's the second question that says, please allow the district to enter into debt for the purposes of A, B, C, D.
So it's, it's kind of like, do we want to pay cash or do we want to borrow for these? Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement. And generally, that operational piece would be, and we did have a technology operational referendum back in, it's either 1999, 2001. The question read, does the community, do the members of the community wish to allow the district an additional $950,000 of revenue limit authority for the purposes of technology purchases? That was approved. So we, we did have an operational approved referendum back 20, 20 plus years ago. I can say that technically that's been rendered null and void since we've been hitting the low spending threshold, but there was one that allowed us at that time to procure additional technology. It had to be used for that purpose. Did that answer your question?
It does, and I don't want to jump ahead to stuff we'll talk about in, in the coming months, but appreciate the things you've identified as important. You and I talked before the meeting and this roof in Jackson, it sounds like it could literally be falling around us. It's not, not safety wise, but leaks and, and.
What are the, what are the point with some of these things that we're going to start doing physical damage to the structure if we don't take care of them? Jackson is, is one of those things that, you know, we've talked about it for years and where we're going to go with that facility. In the last couple of years, we put just about, probably a little better than $400,000 into Jackson and, you know, it just doesn't necessarily seem like, sort of feels like good money after bad.
But I think in some of the conversations when I have with Jackson community and all of that, that they don't feel forgotten. They don't feel like we're not putting money into them when we need to and we're still updating things like their library space and all of that because that was important to them following the failure of the 2019 referendum where their new building was on that docket, that they did not want to feel set aside or that we were not contributing. And so we still maintain and assure that those kids have the same opportunities that our other buildings and students are afforded. So I think that's really important to recognize as well.
Other questions? So as this is a discussion item, we'll see this at a future agenda for approval. All right. Thank you. All right. And speaking of that, we're on to future agenda items. So our board meeting calendar. Upcoming meetings will all be held here at the Education Service Center that I'm about to list. November 21, Curriculum Committee, 8:30 AM. November 22 is our board work session, as the superintendent mentioned, 4:00 PM. And then regular board meetings, November 28 and December 12, both at 5:30. And again, all those here at the Education Service Center, but certainly watch for the postings in case the time or dates or places might, might change. Any questions on the calendar? Any items for follow up and communication? Hearing none, we have reached the end of our planned agenda and as such, I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Kurt, thank you. Motion and second to adjourn. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.